Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to this meeting of the council. I have a couple of practical issues to highlight. We have no fire drill planned tonight, so if there is fire alarm, please make your way out of the building in a calm and orderly fashion. As guided by staff, we're going down the main staircase and through the main exit on St Peter's Street or Bethel Street. I think with mobility issues, you should gather in the foyer on the left hand side, which will be the chamber near the bounce trade where assistance will be provided. Toilets are far enough along either side of the chamber, main stairs to the left, generous to the right. May I ask if you need to leave from the turn to the council chair at the meeting, ensure the doors do not sound after you have been afraid from talking when another person is speaking? Please note that this meeting will be live streamed on the council YouTube channel and will be capable of repeating to viewers. Apologies for absence have been received from councillors Kay, Kendrick, Knight, Padda, Price, Smith, Thomas and Warley, but any other apologies please don't take. So, thank you. So I sent two declarations of interest, are there any declarations of interest, councillor Lohles?
Thank you Deputy Lord Mayor, yes I'd like to declare financial due interest in item sixteen, that was called two accommodation as a student landlord myself and I I think it was a brief reference to item fifteen in the planning paper, but I don't think it consisted of anything good, but I will leave the chamber for discussion on item sixteen.
Thank you very much. Councillor Harper?
Thank you Chair, I apologise, I'm, I need to find the right item, I've literally just got a train. I want, I need to declare that I'm predetermined on motion nineteen C, so I will also leave the chamber and not go over.
Thank you, thank you for that. I also need to note that on the motion nineteen B, congratulating the Lionesses, there's a reference being the amendment from the Green Group to Act of Norfolk, I'm the Chair of the Act of Norfolk Foundation, which is a charitable act of Norfolk. And we are currently looking to do some of the things that are being called for in resolution four of that motion, I'm declaring other interests on that. Thank you. So we now move on to my announcements. As many of you are aware, I've been covering for the Lord Mayor in the last few days and have been able to attain a number of engagements. Last Wednesday, we were at Norfolk County Council's Flourish Awards. It was great to see such wonderful examples of great practice transforming the lives of lots of young people in that city. Thursday afternoon, the AGM at the Norfolk University Hospital, where we had a jobless group of staff going above the law to seek inexpensive solutions to really improving the health outcomes for patients. Thursday evening, I attended the MATTI project, finding together the remembrance service, the annual remembrance service to remember and honour those who have been affected by loss through substance issues and mental health issues. There was powerful testimony there from someone who has about made use of their services. Saturday, we were launching Black History Month, this was hugely uplifting and welcoming event, and it's always a delight to be invited to join in singing in closets in Africa. And on Thursday, I will visit Norwich Institute for Language Education to meet a group of students from Switzerland. Please note that due to the large amount of business on the agenda tonight, I'm minded to take item nine without discussion or debate as it's only been lectured, and item seven will be one of us, councillor Jones will move it and then one of us will speak if they want to let you know debate on that item. So item four, the minutes, the minutes for meetings on the twenty fourth of June twenty twenty five are for the council confirmation. The annexed questions asked at the last council meeting is not included, but we added after the question, other than the parts of accuracy that need to be read. And in each case, the Callaghan Council started to propose the approval of the minutes of the meeting held on twenty fourth of June twenty twenty five.
I thought we would propose, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. I thought we would ask the second minutes.
Both as agreed.
Thank you. Now need to vote, all those in favour please indicate. That's Carrie, thank you. So the minutes have been confirmed and will be signed off at the end of the meeting. We now move on to public questions and petitions. No petitions have been received, but we do have two public questions. Unfortunately, neither of the questions are able to attend, so what I'll do is I'll read out their questions and the appropriate cabinet member to answer them. So the first question is from Christina Mackay, her question is, "The council collects council tax from all residents to maintain services and ensure our streets and parks are clean and safe. However, there is a clear imbalance in how well different parts of the city are maintained. Is it that suburban residents are considered less important? Across the entire city, grassy areas alongside roadside are overrun with foxtails, dangerously invasive plants that harm both animals and people. I personally paid eight hundred pounds in vet bills after one got stuck in my dog's face. Streets are also littered with broken glass and bricks. Two weeks ago, I reported loose bricks in the street, but they remain. My question, will the council commit to cleaning and maintaining all areas of Norwich equally? How do you justify the ongoing overload in suburban neighbourhoods?" Councillor Harper, would you give your reply please?
Yes, thank you and thanks for the question. We are committed to maintaining all areas of the city to a consistent and equitable standard. And while the city centre does receive a different type and level of attention due to a high number of visitors and businesses, we recognise the need and short bursts of urban neighbourhoods are not very loaded. To address this, we've come to work with our street cleaning service provider, Norwich City Services Limited, NTSL, to review our street cleaning and maintenance schedules with aim at improving equity and standards across all walls. This is an ongoing exercise and the regulatory board certainly moves to services. Regarding foxtail grasses, I regret distressing expenses as court. However, the maintenance of roadside grass boulders is responsibility of Norfolk County Council, but I really am sure that these concerns are passed on to them. For debris such as broken glass, NTSL are in to respond to urgent reports within a maximum of twenty four hours wherever possible. We're working to ensure these standards are maintained consistently across all locations. More widely, on street and state cleanliness, the council has run and supported a number of initiatives which benefit neighbourhoods across the city. The council's Clean Streets Programme targeted neighbour cleanups, brought together NTSL, Environment Services, housing, commuting, enabling and other relevant staff, and to deliver coordinated improvements to twelve neighbourhoods and streets across the city. Last week, the council's estate management team commenced the pilot of new estate inspections approaches, starting with Dr Watson Grove, which will allow residents to give feedback in a meaningful way about what improvements they want to see where they live and how resources can be prioritised. Recent events such as Rosa, Shornley Avenue and Sleepy Green have demonstrated how the council can work with residents and local community groups to make a practical difference while strengthening community participation and engagement. Finally, the recent announcement that Norwich is set to receive funding from the government's Pride and Place Programme demonstrates the government and council's commitment to investing in suburban neighbourhoods and not just city centres. Both from West Brom, it's set to see about twenty million pounds over ten year period, as is Pillin Park and Hartseas. These locations are all known for using a quantity target area, or REITs, which have been identified as a need of targeted investment and but ultimately will react to these communities, decide how this funding gets spent, it should start historic grassroots renewal in these areas. Thank you.
Thank you. As Christina Mackay is not here, I will not raise supplementary question. Catherine Nover said that they're unable to attend, so I will read out another question from there. "What action is Norwich City Council taking to ensure that single homeless living in semi-permanent tents along Riverside or Halfhead have appropriate accommodation? The area lacks facilities to support long-term accommodation, yet tents may not provide extended periods despite repeated complaints to streeting. This raises concerns about safety, sanitation and the wellbeing of both the individuals and the wider community. What proactive steps will the council take to prevent rivers of water from becoming unmanaged campsites?" Councillor Jones, would you give your reply please?
Thank you. We are firmly committed to protecting wildlife and supporting those experiencing homelessness. We invest in local resources year round to provide daily support, including a dedicated wildlife team and access to hostel and supportive accommodation. Through our partnership with Healthways Norwich, individuals can also access special established shelters, including health and substance misuse support. While we offer range of assistance, it's important to acknowledge we cannot compel individuals to accept help. Engagement is voluntary and building trust takes time. In the case of Riverside Ork, once the situation brought time pension, our team responded promptly and attempted daily to engage those towns in the area. Through persistent outreach, we were able to develop personalised support plans for those individuals willing to engage, leading to successful outcomes for several people. We have worked closely with the landowner to address the remaining tenants. Laces can serve in collaborating and improving science through discouraged future in towns. Our aim is to ensure that the side or does not become an unmanaged site, whilst continuing to offer compassionate and practical support for those in need."
Thank you. As Catherine Nover is not here, I will not raise supplementary question. We now move on to questions for cabinet members from councils. There are twenty four questions from members of the council.
Actually, Chair, sorry, we had a question that was refused.
Well.
It was being submitted. We were in touch with my son.
Unfortunately, if the question was refused by Democratic Services for their reasons, then it can't be taken.
I'm sorry, it's not good enough.
This is not a matter of debate.
We don't like you.
This is not a matter of debate. Will you please keep quiet?
Ask a question.
My son, why would you commit?
The question doesn't have to be an in question.
That's not good enough. Ask a question.
Why is that valid? We are members of the borough, we're members of the city, it's that simple.
No, not good enough. That's not good enough.
Our councillors, our councillors are already ready.
End of the meeting, thank you. You leave the chair. Thank you. Welcome back following that brief adjournment. I think it would be useful for members of the chamber to understand why that member couldn't ask the question. The question, the question that was put to this council within the last six months and therefore it was ruled invalid under the council's constitution. It was nothing to do with who the organisation was, who the person was, it simply had council procedural rules that applied to members of the public and to councillors' work. So we're now into council questions. There are twenty four questions from members of the councils, cabinet members, of which notice that given the provisions of paragraph three of the constitution, commonly available on the council website, members who have asked questions at the meetings put a supplementary question to the cabinet member. So question one, councillor Davis, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, please. And special, thank you for your response, councillor Harper. Will Norwich Arts Centre be asked to honour the halls having previously won the tender?
Councillor Dave, King, councillor King, councillor Harper?
I'm really sorry, I didn't hear the question. I didn't hear the question, I'm sorry. Is it being announced? Will Norwich Arts Centre be asked to honour the halls having previously won the tender?
I think this is probably more a question for colleague councillor Kidman, but as we previously stated, the procurement exercise has been terminated and the halls will return to council operation as soon as possible.
Yeah, I don't think there's any other one reply, but I think there is a sort of cross portfolio actually here.
Yeah, thank you Deputy Lord Mayor, there is definitely an intersecting portfolio and at the moment, you know, we are still in the process of what I guess you'd call a legal process, procurement process. And we are looking at all the options that we intend to look at all along, but we can't give full updates until the whole process is finished. I mean, it is a legal process and that means that we are bound legally to not give all details until we are allowed to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Question two is councillor Oliver. Councillor Oliver, do you have a supplementary question?
I do, yes. Thank you councillor Jones for your response and you've done the detail again. I wondered if you wanted to shack your eyes to what you made it in those specific months that I met, in March and August?
Councillor Jones, would you give your reply please?
Once I can't give you specific details at this point, I will come back to you in more details. I think what it's often, it varies significantly in terms of what, what cases have been dealt with at that time and sometimes it's easy to get an outcome and come on, it's compelling regardless, but then other times, also ties into the work that's going to go ahead around a good labour policy, because it's being clear what is ASB and where we've got housing we can take around ASB. And where it is something that doesn't always fall within that, so that can also impact on someone's satisfaction and their expectation in service. But what I'll do is I'll get some more detailed information towards being looked at at those particular points and come back to you as soon as possible.
Question three is councillor Kay, has sent apologies, there will be no supplementary question. But question four, councillor Cat, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, Deputy Lord Mayor, thank you councillor Harper for your response. Line rent had been properly run and supported by Norwich City Council, wouldn't have been able to repay the loan as we were expected to do. And the council would have had to put aside money in previous years and add to its budget in preparation for estate collection. Is money going to have gone on additional services in those years? No?
Mr Harper, would you give a line please?
Thank you Deputy Lord Mayor. I'm not actually sure there was a question in there, it sounded like a statement of erroneous facts, but let me just give him a little bit of advice. You have the opportunity to come along and be involved in the scrutiny of the decisions that we took. You were invited to shareholder panel when this was discussed at length and we heard the board recommendation. You didn't show up, you didn't, you didn't send apologies, you weren't in the room and now you have to rewrite the minutes. My little bit of advice is that you can't scrutinise from an empty chair. So if you, if you want to have a sensible discussion about Lion Homes, then perhaps engaging with the process around the management of that body would be, would be helpful. The other point that I'd like to make is that we are going through an MVR process, which is commercially sensitive. In order to recoup as much money as we can for the council, we need to conclude that process. That process and confidential documents relating to that process, which could compromise the commercial deals that we make from the back of that MBL. Those documents were leaked and that is, that is a really unfortunate situation. So I would just say, you're a little bit late to the party to, 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 to want to get involved in a discussion about how Lion Homes was managed or how it was, or how it has been, is being well done. And it's just very disappointing to be grandstanding at a council when there was a process that you could have engaged with.
Question five.
Another point of personal application. Councillor Harper says that I didn't turn up to a meeting. Now, I've already heard apologies from officers for not going through the briefing process or letting them know about that meeting. And kind of this process, officers have dodged me in terms of briefings. And we've had political leaders groups where different political leaders are supposed to be briefed on this, cancelled. And when I hear my other questions, I've been told that meetings would be set up to answer them, cancelled. So I don't think it's fair to say that I've been dodging the process. Thank you.
I think councillor Cat, you began to make a personal explanation, but you've also called into question the behaviour of officers which is concerning for the check. So I think it would be useful to evidence that, but we'll do that offline, but that does concern me. Question five, councillor Oliver, do you have a supplementary question?
I do, thank you Deputy Lord Mayor. Thank you councillor Harper for your response. Apologies regarding the areas of my question, but it shouldn't be included. After a report from thirty one ten Consulting carrying out a review on Lion Homes in October twenty twenty four, stating on page two that "The council shareholder panel should function as the key communication between NTC as sole shareholder and Lion Homes, but has not met since November twenty twenty three." On page twenty four of this report, when talking about shareholder panel, it also says "it should be quarterly but has not met since November twenty twenty three." That would leave a minimum of four missing meetings for every quarter of that year. This is in spite of the Green Group member at that time asking with emotional intensity, saying, asking for this, this panel to meet. On page twenty five, it said "NTC's role as shareholder is not clearly defined and is not being effectively deployed." So I re-ask my question. Does the cabinet member think it is acceptable that while Lion Homes is struggling to provide sites, resources and guidance, the shareholder panel has not been for a year in the most crucial moment of its existence?
Councillor Harper?
Me, again, I'm, I'm not sure whether I'm answering the first question or the second question. Apparently the first question was, was substantially different from the one I've got before me. You know, as you all know, I've been a councillor for a year. I haven't, you know, I can't speak to what happened before I joined, I joined the council. We know that there were, you know, a number of challenges with, with convening Lion Homes meetings in a short period over its, you know, quite substantial existence. And, you know, I think that we can focus on the fact that, that for a period of time, you know, there were fewer meetings than we hoped, you know, we would hope to have had. Or we can focus on the fact that we've been discussing this quite a lot, you know, over the last six months. And actually, there's been no engagement from the party that have now turned up this evening to ask five questions. There was plenty of time, there was plenty of time to ask, ask these questions. There was plenty of time to engage in the process, plenty of time to scrutinise the work that Lion Homes has been doing, but they haven't bothered. You know, they're turning up, this is about headlines, it's not about housing. And, you know, it's just indicative of how that group unfortunately operates, you know. When we look at the attendance figures, I mean, you know, one of the questions has come in this evening is from someone who, who's, who's not here this evening and has missed seventy five percent of council meetings he should have been at. That is non-proper scrutiny. So, you know, this is abject hypocrisy to say that, to say that there hasn't been an opportunity to be involved, you know. So I do find it very frustrating.
Question six, as councillor Warley has sent apologies, there will be no supplementary question. Question seven, councillor Schmier, do you have a supplementary question?
Please, thank you very much. And I'd say wanting more rather than retroactive, retroactive. So I do understand, of course, councillor Harper had mentioned about there are issues of community sensitivity when it comes to Lion Homes. But ultimately, this is, council have to pay the money of this, it's your money, it's my money, everyone in this. have to pay the money of this, it's your money, it's my money, everyone of this is his money, and they deserve an explanation about how we need to pay to be lost. So could we urge the cabinet member to publish the consultancy reports as soon as they are available, so members can understand why 70% of that money was lost by the council this?
Again, I think possibly some of the problems the Green Group are having this evening are about lack of consistent engagement, because actually, very recently at council, very recently, I think the body might have been very, very clear, indeed I brought the recommendation that we should be furthest to scrutiny, we should be furthest to audit it as soon as the process concludes. You know, perhaps it might be, and I have the greatest respect for councillor Schmier, but I think, I think, you know, what is coming up this evening is, you know, from the Green Group are a bunch of very similar questions that indicate to me that they haven't been involved in the process, they haven't attended, they haven't paid attention, and we're now repeating things that we covered. I brought the recommendation to cabinet that we would go to scrutiny, we would go to audit as soon as that process is concluded. The reason that I want to wait for the MVR to conclude is because I don't want to compromise any of the commercial deals that we're trying to do in order to recoup taxpayers' money, so I cannot be clearer than that. We are absolutely going to share that information, that, you know, we have a code of conduct, we have a code of conduct for a reason, it is incumbent upon all of us to respect that code of conduct, and actually to suggest that we are clamping down on information when actually we're trying to protect councillors' interests, we're trying to protect taxpayers' interests, that's the important point here.
Thank you. Question eight, councillor Champion, do you have a supplementary question?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, yes I do. And I'd like to thank councillor James for her response. I just, I want to give a bit of context for those people watching, my question is about refugees, and given that the assignment hotels are a principal what it takes over line homes, I just want to bring a few things into focus. So last month, the government claimed Adam Staley-Jones and claimed that the number of assigned hotels has been brought down by 200 from 400 by the Labour Government. The reality is, is that in the time the Labour Government have been in office, they've only reduced it by three, the other closures were prior to this. The legislation, where, which my question was about, is a political question in its real sense. I would need to consider if it takes 35 days to receive universal credit. Labour authorities need 56 days to work with households at risk of homelessness. Therefore, giving people only 28 days to find work, housing or support, there simply isn't enough time.
Councillor Champion, could you get to the number?
I will get to my point.
Point back into the loose?
Making people destitute ends up costing taxpayers money, causes distress and hardship. It's reassuring that we have a specialist team that's been in place to address this shocking government decision, but also that you acknowledge there will be an increase in rush feed.
Councillor Champion, you have a question, I'll just link to you.
Would you be calling on the Labour Government to rethink this Tory shaped policy? Norwich is a city of sanctuary, where is sanctuary?
Councillor Jones, to your answer please.
I will continue as the House of Portfolio Holder to work with my House team to do everything I can to do to support those who need our support in this city, whatever their background, to access accommodation in the most appropriate way. That is the one thing I know that I can meaningfully do that will make a difference in this city, and I will continue to do that.
Question nine, councillor Fox, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, I do, Deputy Lord Mayor. Yeah, thank you for the answer councillor Kidman, and I just wanted to ask whether we can support these changes in that line of course? If.
Councillor Kidman.
Okay, I think I've probably answered that question, and also just to reiterate again, primary health care is not within really Norwich City Council, however, as we know, many vulnerable people won't be registered with GP practice, and therefore something like a walk-in service is crucial, as that non-emergency primary face-to-face health test advice. And as you know, earlier this year, Norfolk and Wales ICB consulted on either full closure or major cuts in opening hours down to four hours a day. Our Labour MPs, Alison Donald, the Labour MPs, took up the fight to say that backed up in their campaign by Labour councillors in the community. We say that, and that should demonstrate to you how we recognise the importance of primary health care, which is accessible to all, allowing vulnerable people to seek care when they need it with our rigid healthcare systems and with the anonymity that some patients require.
Question two, councillor Gallagher, do you have a supplementary question?
Thank you, thank you, Deputy Lord Mayor, yes I do. Thank you for the answer councillor Harper. As the consultation was tokenistic, as the council decided where wheelchair users would sit rather than asking them, and as it would be insulting to put up a plaque for George Saunders in a space that is not accessible, can we have a written agreement that there will be more spaces for wheelchair users, as the municipal knowledge has discussed with the landscaping team?
Councillor Harper.
As I've said in my answer, you know, my understanding is that we do have significant wheelchair space within the site. If there are specific problems, accessible knowledge of raising, I'm very happy to meet them and have a discussion about that and see what we can do.
Question eleven, councillor Yarwood, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, I do. Thank you councillor Harper for your detailed and helpful information. Do you have clear evidence of one house in Nelson that's not being built correctly? So can I take this house up with you, and can we be reassured that there is a system in place to ensure that all houses are being built correctly?
Yes, absolutely, I'd be very pleased to receive the details, you know, we do have robust systems in place, occasionally, you know, things do go wrong, so if something hasn't been built correctly, then I'd be really keen to go at it and we'll escalate it within the team to get that sorted out, so please do you to share the details.
Thank you.
Question twelve, councillor Lepa, do you have a supplementary question? Bear in mind that councillors have had a centre position this evening, so if you can ask your question, the Labour offices will machine it.
Okay, yeah, thank you Deputy Lord Mayor. First, I can name honourable councillor Harper for her response, it's great to see that some actions have been taken to take a stance on the attempt to divest the Norfolk pension fund. There was one notice in excess that individuals looked to engage in other councils and pensions committees that have implemented ethical investment policies. I really gratefully that time to act for the action happening quickly clarify, and also I would like to ask cabinet members that have been contacted by residents about progress on the promised actions, could please respond to these residents? So I've been waiting for a response from councillor Harper and councillor Stone, thank you.
Question thirteen, councillor McGwire, do you have a supplementary question?
Thank you, Deputy Lord Mayor. I do indeed. Thank you for your answer. Well, I'd like to know, are there any other benefits of three unitary LGR, how could it bring to Norwich?
Councillor Stone.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The proposals that we submitted to central government for three unitary councils in Norfolk, including Greater Norwich, would enable Greater Norwich to take control of its destiny, tackle the longstanding democratic deficit, and have the council with a laser sharp focus on addressing longstanding challenges and seizing new opportunities. It could enhance local democracy, build services around individuals and communities, and create greater opportunities in social mobility for residents. It could grow the economy, create new jobs for local people, and build much-needed housing. In short, it could positively transform local governance and positively transform lives of citizens in ways unimaginable and transformative.
Question fourteen, councillor Mike Sanders, do you have a supplementary question?
This is the question to councillor Cali Harper. My supplementary has already been answered by councillor Harper in a previous answer, but I would like to say, councillor Harper agree with me that in line homes up in both all, we have a great number of good quality homes built in solid bricks and mortar.
Absolutely, I do. You know, line homes were set up for low reasons and has delivered a huge amount for the city, you know, because of line home, over 200 families are well housed, you know, line homes, you know, just market failure, and I think we should all be very proud of that record. But, you know, as I've said, times have changed, the lifting of the HRA for a cap, you know, was a pivotal moment, it's no longer cost-effective to build through management, sorry, a housing company in the same way, and we'll see, you know, we're seeing local authorities up in our country taking exactly the same decision that we have. You know, we are very fortunate in that line homes does have a number of assets, and those assets will now transfer to the council, and, you know, despite the fear and the scale monitoring that's been happening, you know, those assets will go towards repaying the outstanding loan, that's the really important point. You know, it wouldn't be right to really delay facilities, but we should be very, very proud of what line homes achieved, you know, during its lifetime, and, you know, we have taken the decision we've taken in order to be able to do even more social housing than we were planning to do. You know, we are unapologetic, I think, as an administration, in that we will, you know, always strive to deliver more and, you know, and to do that in a way that is cost-effective for our taxpayers.
Question fifteen, councillor Susan, do you have a supplementary question?
Could you say which portfolio holder is to please?
It's your first question, so it's to councillor Jones.
Okay, I welcome, thank you Deputy Lord Mayor. I welcome the portfolio holders for having this answer, and congratulate her on a fantastic job officers are doing to the ground of council tenants. Would you mind sharing with us some of the tenant's satisfaction measures that she's most proud of?
Councillor Jones, let's give you a reply please.
Thank you, and it was, I was really pleased to be publishing tenant satisfaction scores this year, yes, there are areas of improvement, and it shows our journey, but there are some significant ones I think to note. I think overall, we've got 6.9% increase in overall satisfaction, something to be really proud of, and it shows the amazing commitment that is shown by the housing team, both with the property services and within housing, and within the work done at NCSL, that this is starting to have a real impact. Also, 8.9% increase in satisfaction, time to compute repairs. I think we're on a journey, and I think, I hope it will continue to be a positive trajectory, and that ties into our now publishing the Housing Highlights Dashboard, which is, I know, something I had mentioned previously, and I'm really proud now that we've got that online, because it's something that for me is really important to have that transparency, so that councillors and tenants can have that scrutiny of us, and I hope that will also affect our people's understanding of satisfaction in what we're doing.
Question sixteen, councillor Lawrie, do you have a supplementary question?
Thank you, Deputy Lord Mayor, no, no, thank you.
Thank you. Question seventeen, councillor Carrington, do you have a supplementary question?
No, thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Question eighteen, councillor Dryden, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, I do, Deputy Lord Mayor, thank you. It's a thankfully the answer, you would say a bit more about the community got together and actually whole form of plan for Lincoln Way.
Councillor Harper, do you have a reply please?
Yes, thank you for your answer. A consultation was held on the, I guess, the minority platform was my original answer, says with over 200 friendly responses, but there was additional work by the community naming team. We spent time on making that community public, then gathering feedback directly from local residents, I know full well that the local residents in Leyton also worked hard in their debt to engage local people, help them to feed interviews and get them to, thank you all. Yeah, those responses collected across those methods provided some really important information for the basis of this, about how people currently use Leyton Way and what they value about it, and the things that came up top on that metric were natural environment convenience and safety due to lack of traffic, especially with regards to cycling, and on the flip side, obviously asked what they disliked or maybe more positively wanted to see improved, and it's bad feedback which has really been focused on essentially in terms of the three-way plan. The top four improvements people wanted to see, failed for categories roughly speaking of waste bins, biodiversity upgrading lighting, and then additional seating, I think my original answer outlined how connected those responses to what it's practically delivering. So as I say, thank you for your engagement as well.
Question nineteen, councillor Fordham Calister, do you have a supplementary question?
No supplementary, thank you, Lord Mayor, sorry, Deputy Lord Mayor.
Councillor Harper, do you have a supplementary question? Question twenty, no supplementary, Deputy Lord Mayor. Question twenty, councillor Packen, do you have a supplementary question?
I do, Deputy Lord Mayor. So I keep your answer councillor Harper, this £17 million funded government is clearly going to be transformative for those households in the sets of benefits. Please say there are more offer options to these residents to help keep homes warm and feel solid.
Thank you for both your questions. Yeah, I'll take this opportunity to especially highlight two schemes that are still currently open for sign-ups, with me his own service for the big community switch, our collective energy purchasing scheme that helps residents to save money on their energy bills, while also switching to low carbon energy power. This is open for registrations until 30th of October, and registration is free if there's no obligation, so it's well worth doing. The last, the last time we ran this, June 25, 583 Norwich households saved the bills on average £196 per year, dual fuel bill, and £150 for electricity switch only, so as I say, well worth people signing up, encouraging the residents to sign up to see if they can make some savings too. And then there's so together, also works on a collective basis, collective purchasing scheme, but this time for solar photovoltaic systems, i.e. solar panels, battery storage. Registration for this is now live until 17th of October, again, free to sign up, doesn't require you to accept the final offer. About 250 households have registered so far this round, which is really positive. For anyone considering the survey, it's a really good way to do it, it guarantees a high-quality installer, takes that pass for a trial and sell, and you get those systems installed at cheaper than usual market prices, with difficult savings in the past years, haven't seen it through about 10, 25%. So those are two schemes for immediately pressing deadlines of it, it's well worth looking into, me those aims for help residents get cheaper, brilliant energy, cut carbon emissions, and not seem to stay more.
Question twenty-two, councillor Stewart, do you have a supplementary question?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, I do. And thank you councillor Harper for your response, this is, it was up for those of us who have been requesting this upgrade following and during the planning decision process. And councillor Labouck will be happy to hear this too, after speaking in favour of saving a lot of future reviews back in 2012. As a member of Maycroft, I wish to engage, remain engaged with this process, so would councillor Harper please share the constant plans with me, perhaps finally setting up a working group on the new square, that was a really good idea.
Councillor Harper.
Yes, we are in the process of setting up a game, I don't think, I don't think councillor Stewart was here unfortunately, we discussed this at the last council, but the reason that...
We discussed this at the last council, but the reason that the working group hadn't been established is just that we haven't reached the appropriate, we can project what we have now. And my understanding is the democratic services are looking at setting up a day. Again, you know, just to be absolutely clear, there have been other briefings that I know Mankoff councillors were invited to, but weren't able to attend. So, but I'm sure that we'll have updates in the diary soon.
Point of, or would I see any clarification in one of these?
See.
Well, the answer to that suggested that there was a point of the process at which the working group would be set up. But if I understand from correspondence I've heard, it was that the working group should have been set up immediately back in 2024.
Thank you, Chair. As councillor Harper has alluded to, there was a point we've had to go through some governance arrangements, which is talking about terms of reference for the working group. I've been in conversation with Mr Turnbull over the last couple of days and that is now going to be convened at the earliest opportunity. We have now all of those in place.
Should that happen in 2024, that answers the question.
I wasn't here when I don't think when the first information was taken, but I think we had to get to a point where there was something actually for the councillors to discuss. And we have now arrived at the point where we have something to bring to the working group. There was, at the start of it, the point of the work, there was something moving, councillors to look at. We are now in a position where we have things that councillors can be consulted on and worked on.
One of the things I wanted to do is have a long debate on that.
Point of information, I won't share at the time, so I can tell you exactly what happened. It was agreed that the working group would be assumed to be beyond the point of demolition and was actually something to discuss in terms of the development. That was the conversation I had with councillor Osborne, who was the person who seconded the motion when it was put forward. He was quite happy with that at the time. You could shake your head, but it wasn't there right in conversation. So we have not delayed, we've not done anything late than we should have. We followed the originally, originally planned time scale. And that's what we said along with councillor as well.
Second questions have been received from councillors, Lords and Susan Sands, but that's been a little bit more than 30 minutes into the questions. Perhaps the staff of questions, councillors, they will not be taking it. And this is in line with the constitution. So we now move on to item seven, update on debate on hate. As I said in my introduction, this isn't an item for debate, rightly given the title. Councillor Jones will provide an update and group spokespersons will be called to make a speech. Councillor Jones.
Thank you. When we voted against the amendment to adopt the fate of hate nation, made a clear unanimous commitment, it was stated in integrity that we as elected representatives not allow intimidation across the world, at least become normalized in public life. Unfortunately, current climate, increasing numbers of elected members are affected. So this is why it felt was timely that we bring forward this update report, which I hope you all have a chance to read, looking at the exit work done by officers in the standards committee and the work that is still to come. And this is also an opportunity, I believe, for us to reaffirm our commitment and voice that we value democracy without fear and intimidation. I feel that's timely given some of the other things we're also discussing tonight around hate within this city. So the report forensics sets out the progress we've made of reporting tools, new reporting tools, making joint working with police, safety pact development and zero tolerance approach being formalised. These reports are steps, but they're only meaningful if each and every one of us continues to stand by what we read without wavering, without excuses. Also, our ongoing steps will be finalized in the coming months to support our work as elected members because we need to be able to serve our communities without fear. So let us be absolutely clear, projecting abuse intimidation is not optional. It's a responsibility because the heart of what it needs to serve public life with honesty and courage. When intimidation comes with someone politically opposed or from a group whose aims we might otherwise sympathise with, the principle remains the same, it is unacceptable, full stop. If we're propagating an asset of self saying, well, maybe in this case it's understandable, then we undermine the very cultural respect we commit to build. In doing so, we risk deterring people at the time of election, especially those under representative groups, which are shows often disproportionately targeted. This is not about silence or criticism, helping the vast debate is vital in democracy. The debate crosses the line when it becomes harassment. When it seems to intimidate others, this is why the council signed up to the Local Campaign for breaking these terms and working with show for actions that were meaning. Whilst there are still many who wish to engage meaningfully and with the brightest and rawest standards in democratic process, each instance paid taking over for meaningful debate is one too many. It's fair to say this is far from a knowledge phenomenon, with increasing reports of abuse directed to elected members in local authorities across the country. The impact on democratic process can be far reaching. We need politicians who represent our community, our communities. But if toleration intimidation happens, it is necessary. I think many fantastic future councillors will be put up serving their communities. This cannot happen. So my message is simple, let us demonstrate integrity by holding what we voted for, let us support one another across party lines, rejecting abuse from whatever it comes from. Let us share the residents that democracy, not just building on respect, not fear. So I really look forward to the next steps that Standards Committee can take in developing this guidance. And I hope that it provides a useful tool for these supporting members in what is a challenging time at the moment because actually we're all here to represent direction. I believe we all share those same values and that's way more important than anything that divides us. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jones. Councillor Carrington, would you like to respond?
Yes, thank you for this update. It's very good to have an update on motion. As a member of Standards Committee, I've been really pleased to help with this work. And I'd like to thank especially one chief supervisor for leading on this and keeping it running through something that's very much needed and timely. I think with all of the small parties well aware of the kind of atmosphere that's brewing that we're all facing, we are all moving together. As our residents who have less protection than us probably, we in the group fully sign up to creating a culture of safety and respect and always have an inclusive culture that don't use process to silence people, that works for us all. So yeah, thank you for bringing this and having this update. I hope that we can continue to make progress in this.
Thank you. Councillor Apple, did you want to say?
Yes, I would, thank you, Deputy Lord Mayor. I'll be very grateful, but it doesn't mean that I don't think this is an important update. So thank you for the update, we've set up practical means of support for councillors as we undertake our work and thank you to all those who have worked so hard to produce it. It is so important at this particular time that we engage in this debate and it's so important that the public can engage with local politicians and the politicians feel safe to engage with the public. Otherwise, the risk is that people, particularly those who are protecting character and seats, who simply want to make their communities a bit better, get driven from the field. And that's never going to be good for our democracy and for our politics. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Taylor, did you want to say? Thank you. So as this item is noted, we'll now move to the next item of business, which is political proportionality. Councillor Stone, I'm calling on you to move item eight, please.
Thank you, Deputy Lord Mayor. The purpose of this report is to comply with provisions of the Local Government and Housing Act 1989, which requires local authorities to review the allocation seats to political groups if there was a change in the membership of groups of the council. As a heavy change in membership for three parties, the council is required to review the political balance. The monitoring officer has undertaken a review of the seats and has found that changing membership does not alter the percentage decision to recommend or change the allocation as agreed at the annual meeting on the 20th of May 2025. I propose that the committee size of numerical allocation seats be approved as detailed in Act A in the report and I would like for a second, please.
I'll call on councillor Hampton to second the item.
Thank you, Deputy Lord Mayor, formally seconded.
Thank you very much. I don't, on my running, have any group spokespersons for this. Do any groups actually wish to speak on this very interesting item? Does anyone else want to speak as well, a group spokesperson? In which case councillor Stone, would you like to respond to the notes, please?
Well, I'm very happy to respond to the lack of response and that is my response, thank you.
Thank you. All those in favour, please indicate. Thank you very much. So item nine, casual appointments, this item is for noting, so we'll move to the next item of business. Item ten, scrutiny committee's annual report for 2024-25, which I will now move. As Chair, I'm delighted to present this annual scrutiny report, which captures the breadth and depth of our efforts to help ensure that the council is responsive, inclusive and forward thinking. Three committee's work over the 2024-25 civic year has been undertaken in a transparent, accountable and constructive way, with considered challenge, history of course is a lot, where appropriate. This year, our committee tackled a diverse and ambitious work programme from addressing emergency homeless provisions during severe weather to showing the quality diversity and inclusion action plan. We've engaged with complex issues that affect the lives of our residents. We scrutinised the budget, debated the future shape of the city hall and explored how knowledge can become a truly accessible system. Topics brought together elected members, officers, external experts and community voices demonstrating the power of collaborative governance. One of our most rewarding aspects, one of the most rewarding aspects of scrutiny, is the ability to influence real change. The majority of our recommendations are accepted by cabinet, leading to tangible improvements in policy, service delivery and public engagement. Whether it was advocating for clearer sweat criteria, pushing for anonymous recruitment processes or proposing a good employer charter, our committees consistently sought added value and amplified the voice of those reserved. I want to extend my sincere thanks to all committee members, their dedication and insight to the offices who supported our work with diligence and clarity and to the residents and stakeholders who contributed their perspectives. Scrutiny is not just a procedural function, it is a democratic duty and this report reflects our collective commitment to that duty. As we look ahead to the challenges and opportunities for 25-26, I'm confident that scrutiny committee will continue to play a vital role in shaping a fairer, more inclusive and more resilient knowledge. Thank you. I now call on councillor Galvin to second the item.
Thank you, Deputy Lord Mayor, and thank you for the report as well. Thank you for chairing the scrutiny so positively over the past year. I just want to say that I think scrutiny is really crucial in having a head of council where decisions aren't rated or seen by the public. It's a chance, it's a really important chance to be able to question things and have information and share it publicly and to include the public. And that's what we also tried to do this year and I think could benefit publically and having more public inclusion in scrutiny. And I'd encourage all councillors to talk to their residents about how they can bring forward scrutiny items and get involved and the follow up actions. I encourage all councillors to get involved in scrutiny, that isn't just a scrutiny members, it's very important. So yeah, I really look forward to scrutiny coming from that over the next, over the next year and taking out on the road a bit more and really listening to what people in Norwich want, especially in the next couple of years coming forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Call on councillor Mike Sands to reply on behalf of the Labour, please.
Sorry, Deputy Lord Mayor, you can call me on my own, I've been asked to comply on this, but I just want to support the content, nature of the report and say that we had a good deal.
Thank you very much. Councillor Dunn, it's a matter of opinion.
Thank you, Deputy Lord Mayor. I welcome this report, in particular the task of finishing group's always demonstrate real education using thoughtful, well ed化的contributions that affect priorities and deserves our communities. I also want to work with scrutiny committee as a whole and our thorough individual approach. Members have engaged constructively, asked the right questions and made clear practical recommendations aimed at improving outcomes for residents. I'd like to thank Lucy, our first chair, for the sterling work she's done on HOS and all the work she's done additionally on the vital work of service. And finally, I'd like to thank officers and James, our chair, for fostering an environment in which we're possible growth and respect for developers and allow us to scrutiny committee to actively promote in council. It's important to be able to debate and discuss without fear or favour and James has always encouraged us to happen. So, thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Now, do you have any others wish to comment on this? In which case I will respond. Oh, sorry, councillor Jones, I didn't see you there.
Just like I say, thank you, someone who has thought a number of things about what they only ask. Pressure of scrutiny, it's been a very interesting process and something I've actually really enjoyed. So that input and scrutiny is, should be really important. Also the opportunity to bring something back to the committee because I'm very keen to be able to have that opportunity, it is really welcome, to bring back an update to ground sweat because I think it's important to show where we've responded to things that scrutiny brought. So thank you for that opportunity to update and I'm hoping to be able to do that in other topics in future when it's my pleasure.
Thank you. Councillor Harper.
Thank you, just very briefly, because I served on scrutiny committee for the first half of the year. I just wanted to endorse other remarks that have been made. I've certainly found scrutiny a really good way of, you know, getting back involved in local government, having had quite a long break. And I certainly learned a lot in that time and I'm grateful to all of the officers that worked incredibly hard on the scrutiny programme. As councillor Davies and councillor Galvin, so I think the task of finishing and having the opportunity to meet with people directly and hear them about their perspective particularly that I hope you do.
Do you have any other comments? In which case I'll respond. Thank you very much for the sort of made positive comments that everyone's made about bad scrutiny. Task of finishing group is absolutely a pivotal to what we do and the ability to bring in that expertise from that side as part of that process in a detailed way, I think is really important to the work the council does. Councillor Davies made reference to HOS. One of the things I really have enjoyed, I enjoyed the last civic year as a substitute member for HOS, was being able to go to a couple of meetings when councillor Galvin wasn't able to. It's really interesting as we are an authority that doesn't have that sort of healthcare remit, to be able to go along and see what is, what is happening. So that's, it's really great that we get such detailed reports back from councillor Galvin. So thank you very much. And quickly to the votes, all those in favour, please. Thank you very much. So we now move on to item eleven, which is the appointment of statutory officer. Councillor Harper to move, to move.
I think that's going to be the actual.
Okay, my councillor Stone to move.
If you don't mind, that's permissible. Thank you. Councillor, I'm really pleased to propose the appointment of these two statutory officers. They're two really, really important posts within the organisation. We managed to appoint two highly experienced and qualified professionals. The first is Isabel Britton, appointed as Secretary for Local Finance Officer. She's a highly experienced qualified finance professional. She served previously as Chief Finance Officer, Deputy Chief Finance Officer on a number of local authorities. And then Nick Austin, Nick has significant experience at director level in urban areas and has been serving on a specialist entry basis with us in regulatory services since April. To the panel, for both appointees, we're very impressed and very pleased that they were able to make these appointments and I commend them to you.
Thank you. Call on councillor Hampton to second that item.
Sorry, Chair, I think I was going to be seconding, I will do say for the new secretary of acting.
Thank you. Now, we've got two group spokespersons. Councillor Shearer.
You have a right, yes, thank you very much. Yeah, I'll be brief. I look forward to working with these two individuals, I wish them, of course, all the best in terms of the the climate and environment executive director. Of course, this is a portfolio that we on the Green Group is obviously very pleased to our hearts and it's important that this one is given the kind of respect and coolness that it deserves because we need to remain committed to ensuring that Norwich is serious about playing a huge part in tackling the climate and ecological emergency that is happening around the world. In terms of the section one five one officer, this is really important and, of course, for a council like Norwich, it is a critical importance going forward. I've had the pleasure of meeting the developer, I believe that she will bring humility and expertise and clarity. These are things and characteristics that, of course, we do need at this time as we go through this period of change. And in my role as Chair, I do look forward to working with her and indeed asking very thorough questions to ensure our financial governance remains strong. I do know at this point, just want to bring to everyone's attention the fact that we do seem to have gone through a a high number of chief finance officers in recent years, and that turnover is not unique to Norwich. And reality is, of course, that there is a shortage of expertise in local government finance nationally, which has made it increasingly difficult for councils of all sizes to recruit and retain permanent section one five one officers. And so I would like to make sure that on record, we did note it, that we do, I think, as a council, need to basically not only be local government association, and indeed government nationally, about this lack of expertise. Councils simply can't function well without someone with experienced financial leadership. But let's move back to the item. In front of us, genuinely, I started with a wish to be most willing, ensuring Norwich is both financially resilient and environmentally ambitious, and I look forward to working with them as we all do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor.
Just to say briefly that I'm happy to ratify the appointments of Isabel Britton and Nick Austin, taking effect from tomorrow. I was involved with both of these appointments and therefore have no hesitation in recommending them to people.
Councillor Davies, please.
Thank you. We welcome the new exec director of climate and environment, who was very impressive in the interim and has already got stuck into the role, despite not officially starting till tomorrow. His hands on approach is really welcome, and it's great to see another exec director appointed with such a passion for their work. I would make the new section one five one officer, Chair, that this is a role that must be fulfilled. As a council, so I have to ratify.
Thank you very much. Do any other councillors wish to speak on this item? Thank you. It's councillor Stonehill, do you want to respond, please?
Thank you to our group leaders for your very positive responses, I acknowledge the point made, Martin. I mean, there are shortages of local authority offices in a number of specialisms, which makes it difficult to recruit and retain. That's only gotten a little bit worse because of the uncertainty created by local government organisations. People are probably unlikely to change jobs until they're clear what organisation is going to survive, where the organisation is going to be, which again makes it more difficult. So we're really pleased to have made such, to such really good appointments at such a difficult time. And I do hope that the industry authority, hopefully you can get a greater knowledge in your authority, it will be much larger, it'll be much better job, it will be able to pay a lot better than we can, and it'll have a much better chance of attracting really good talent.
Thank you. We now move to the vote. All those in favour, please indicate. It's unanimous, thank you very much. So, now onto item twelve, the adoption of the hackney carriage and private hire drivers and operators standards. Councillor Jones, I'll call on you to move item twelve, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The report summarises changes to the hackney carriage private hire driver slash operator licensing policies as set out in the appendix to the report in accordance with the five yearly review process. Item one sets out a number of changes to improve passenger safety. These are mandatory driver subscription to the DBS update service, the requirement of a basic DBS check for all non-driving staff and company directors in the trade, the maintenance of the register by business of all staff working in the trade, formalising of joint enforcement with neighbouring councils, the obligation for drivers to undertake group two medical assessments, safeguardal refresher training on renewal of licence, the prohibition of fake billing in vehicles, broad alignment with the higher institute of licensing standards for previous convictions, city council penalty points to be valid for three years, city council penalty points for mobile phone use while driving to increase to six, to increase checks on driver DBS slash DBL indicators from on renewal to six monthly, and to mandate the acceptance of both cash and hard payments. CCTV using difference will become optional for licence holders. The knowledge test will be retained and enhanced to ensure licence holders understand the licensing conditions. The distinction between hackney carriage and PHD licences is also retained. Once new policies are adopted, we will work with the communications team to produce a streamlined, easy to read version of the Queen book so that the rules are transparent, consistent and harder to ignore. The consultation had an impressive 230 responses, roughly split 50 50 between drivers and operators and wider public. The policy went to June Regulatory Committee and then September Cabinet, both of which recommended approval to full council without amendments. I will finish by thanking officers for all their hard work producing the revised policy and recommending the revised policies for adoption. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hampton, would you stand your vote, please?
Thank you, Deputy Lord Mayor. In addition to the points, councillor Jones, I'd like to comment. I too would like to thank officers for their hard work in helping with this important update to council policy. I would encourage all councillors here to support this and agree to its adoption.
Thank you. I can get to group spokespersons. Councillor Stewart, would you like to respond on behalf of the Green Party, please?
Thank you, Deputy Lord Mayor, and thank you to councillor Jones and councillor Huntley. And also to officers, please, altogether, it's been a massive task and a heavy report. And I welcome the updating standards before us tonight, I wanted to do by recognising that taxis and private hire vehicles are part of our city's transport network. For many people, particularly vulnerable users, under users and saving residents, and those travelling late at night for analysis taxis, not just for convenience but a lifeline. Hackney carriages form part of our public transport network. But I cannot continue without one of the colleagues that are two of my own concerns and those of state partners that have safety enforcement in this sector largely ignored. When I chaired the licensing committee, I consistently raised the enforcement capacity, particularly at night when incidents are post-night to occur. A policy can be well written, but without proper management, risks becoming more than what it appears. We know the risks, national inquiries and generally local cases have shown they have failures in taxi licensing enforcement in that sense. The consequences, especially for vulnerable passengers. Women and girls in particular, and some of us say they're not as safe, and yet Norwich can repeatedly have to do more than this. Insufficient employers' checks and spot checks, spot check tests and over reliance on reactive and proactive commentary. I welcome this document and the update and the emphasis in this policy on the safety of children and adults. Let's be clear, safety must be backed up with visible enforcement, not the extra operators to provide or paper based assurances. That means publicly resourced compliance officers, officers, frequent mystery check checks and zero tolerance to operators and drivers that allow or create a risk to vulnerable passengers. So while I'm on the policy in fact, I support the intent behind it. I urge Cabinet to pair adoption and investment in enforcement and in a public reporting framework, a clear public reporting framework. Residents should have confidence that every operator who has a licence in the city has been checked or has been handled and carried when necessary. Only then can we say we are serious about protecting the safety of women and girls and those who ride taxis in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ackroyd, would you stand on behalf of the Dens, please?
Thank you, Deputy Lord Mayor. This is a really important policy revision. And thank you to officers for all the hard work that's gone into producing it. These regulations aim to create a safer environment for all passengers, particularly those who are most at risk. Stringent taxi regulations are crucial for protecting children and vulnerable adult individuals in what can be a high risk environment if not properly managed. And again, you know, this is going to be crucial that that if we've got the new policy, then it has to be properly managed. Thank you.
Councillor Davies, would you require him to speak?
Thank you. We completely support this. This policy helps ensure that decisions are not made at home, cold and consistently. It provides fairness and is especially supported with resources. I just want to kind of echo what's been said by councillor Suey and by councillor Ackroyd that the policy is only as good as its implementation. I hope that we do have resources for sufficient staff training, oversight and enforcement, so that policy can be applied consistently after the main inspiration. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any other councillors wish to speak on this item? In which case councillor Jones, would you move on to move?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you for the speakers. I'm conscious there has been an increase in licensing enforcement officer in all of the cities at city council over the last couple of years. And hopefully combined with these measures that are set out for efficient, in that way, seek to enhance passenger safety. It should be acknowledged that licensing fees more broadly, while I should stress taxi licensing fees are set locally, haven't kept pace from inflation, those that are set nationally for many, many years now. And while that has been positive to businesses, it has undoubtedly created resource pressures on regulatory service departments up and down the country. But there is, there is increased enforcement capacity to what there was. Hopefully with these revisions, we can see enhanced passenger safety for those using taxis and PHDs here in Norwich. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we move to the vote. All those in favour, please indicate. That's going to be unanimous. Thank you. Now, we move on to item thirteen, residential caravan licensing standards. Once again, one councillor Jones, would you consider your item to be allowed, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. As set out in the report, Norwich's council owns a freehold for a residential caravan site for gypsy and traveller travelers on Swanton Road. Historically, this has been managed by Norfolk County Council. The site has now been leased to Broadland Housing Association to manage, and this necessitates the establishment of the residential caravan site licensing model standards. We have taken account of the national model standards for multi-occupancy caravan sites in relation to developing our local model standards for single occupant, often GRT sites, such as Swanton Road. When attaching model standards to site licenses, each site in relevant conditions must continue to be assessed on site by site basis and internal parameters. Those for GRT entity place significant inequalities in health and education outcomes. As ever, decent housing lies at heart of improving these inequalities in outcomes, and these standards seek to support this community by ensuring that their accommodation is safe, adequately spaced and hygienic, while respecting their culture and traditions. There were no formal responses to the public consultation on these standards. However, before the consultation was launched, the council worked closely with the service manager for the GRT service in Norfolk. Their expertise was instrumental in shaping the initial ECUA, ensuring that specific needs and spectres of the GRT community were considered from the outset. Following the consultation period, further input was sought from the service to review and refine the assessment, reinforcing our commitment to inclusivity and compliance with the Equality Act. In addition, the gypsy and traveller community manager of Broadland Housing has contacted us directly to provide feedback on behalf of residents at the Swanton Road site. Their involvement in pre-consultation phase helped ensure that any proposed conditions or standards would be appropriate and achievable for the site and its residents. The policy went to June Licensing Committee and September Cabinet, both of which recommended approvals to full council without amendments. I will finish by thanking officers for all their hard work producing the policy and recommending the policy for adoption. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hampton, would you like to second that, please?
Thank you, Deputy Lord Mayor, formally seconded, as ever.
Thank you. Councillor Davies, Councillor Stewart, just on behalf of the Greens.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Lord Mayor, and thanks again to councillor Jones and councillor Hallery. Greatly, I want to acknowledge the work of officers in bringing forward these policy standards for residential caravans. And this is not a contentious item, but it is important, giving greater clarity and consistency, ensuring the sites are properly regulated and residents have safety in these conditions. And we are, my group of officers, going to bear the work and will happily support the regulations.
Thank you. Councillor Ackroyd.
Thank you, Deputy Lord Mayor. I'll be brief, but again, this is an important policy designed to protect site residents and provide a safe and healthy environment. As we read in the document before, so as evidenced nationally, the poor outcomes in both health and education with gypsy and traveller people, for example, facing life expectancies between 10 and 25 years less than the general population. So anything that we can do to maybe live better has to be good, and these standards should help towards that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Davies.
I think I'll just echo the words of councillor Ackroyd, which is pretty much about what we can say, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other councillor which wants to speak on this item? In which case councillor Jones, would you like to respond, please?
Thank you, I'll formally move to her.
Thank you. Yes, councillor Hammond, so you're preserving your right to speak, so I have to remind you that you have the option. Nothing further to add, thank you. I normally assume that preserving your right to speak is a shulah, if I don't hear anyone, then it's worth checking. So we now move to the vote. All those in favour, please indicate. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Item fourteen, Treasury Management Review at twenty twenty four, twenty five. My honourable members, I want to move item fourteen.
Thank you, Deputy Lord Mayor, I thought I'd give councillor Jones a brief respite. It was my turn on the question. Anyway, so in terms of this report, I'm going to say substantially what I said at Cabinet, I think. You know, this report is a statute of law, it provides details of the treasury management activity for twenty twenty four, twenty five financial year to the 31st of March, twenty twenty five. It highlights our compliance with the council's treasury management strategy and the policies which have previously been approved by the council. Report recommendation asks us to know the treasury management activity undertaken in financial year to 31st of March, twenty twenty five and for us to approve this this evening. The council has adopted the SIF code practice for treasury management in the public sector and the credential code for capital finance in local facilities not granted, it's treasury management code activity in compliance with these terms. The council places responsibility on members to review and scrutinise treasury management policy. Policy and Activity against Prudential Indicators. And this report sets out a range of indicators and highlights that there are no breaches to alert us to. The council remains significantly internally borrowed and continues to repay maturing debt without refinancing. Cash balances were invested to enable the council to maximise its returns in the current interest rate environment. During twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five, the council's cash investments returned over £5.3 million worth of investment income, which is obviously a great result. The council's Treasury Management Activity continues to be monitored against a wider economic backdrop and interest rate environment in accordance with our Treasury Management Advisors and our Treasury Management Strategy. I'm pleased that this report illustrates the positive management of our cash balances and debt portfolio, and I endorse the action set out in the report. And I just like to thank officers for all the hard work.
Thank you. Councillor Stonehouse, would you like to second the item?
Formally seconded, Deputy Lord Mayor. Reserving on to speak.
I would screen space for this councillor, Emily, on the green seats.
Thank you, Deputy Lord Mayor. I'd like to start by thanking officers for their dedicated work. I'm going to report it to others by their willingness to answer any questions that are to be answered. It's much appreciated. I can be sure that this is one point I want to raise for you, which is that it's great to see that work has now begun to address the suggestions made in this scrutiny topic on economic and sustainable management of cash balances and investments, and that expenses on ESG and ethical investment were given to attention in the process for the new Treasury Management Advisors. It's also great to see that a helpful survey has been developed and sent out to various contacts to kind of other consultants and doing about economic and sustainable banking and investment. So it's established and learned from this practice. I understand it's been difficult to get responses to the survey via the communication channels, which is definitely frustrating. I hope though that this doesn't mean that we treat this job as done and continue business as usual. I hope they're willing to invest and allocate office time and try to other groups that could get us answers. For example, could we explore whether any master students in investment of finance and who are able to be interested in doing dissertation research on best practices for our local government, economic and sustainable banking and investment? Could we reach out to councils who have brought economic or sustainable investment motions in the past and see where they've gotten to? Could we reach out specifically to councils that have shown ambition with regard to economic and sustainable banking and investment? Is it the council of Waterford, the council of West Church, the council of all of that some media coverage in this respect? Or could we raise a campaign group active in this space, the Bank Back to Campaign, Bank Track, reclaim finance, possibly finance centre, and see what data they hold that would be willing to see? I was very pleased to hear the news that one five one officer, here from the one five one officer, that there's openness to taking some of these suggestions on board. And the cabinet member, councillor Harper, may also be open to having a conversation about how best to establish and learn from best practice in the area of economic and sustainable banking and investment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Davies.
Thank you, Jen. It's a wonderful report. And while it shows the council's state within its borrowing limits, we can't ignore the fact that there was a thirteen million pound under spent, and residents don't benefit from money that's just left in the bank. It's true that relying on reserves rather than new borrowing is central in this, and that's welcome. But the real test of financial management isn't just a tidy balance sheet, it's delivery. Proof is important, but residents need to see action, but we will be voting for this report. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I ask councillor Harper to respond, councillor, well, do any other councillors wish to speak? And councillor Stonehouse, you have a holding reservation to speak.
That's fine. No, nothing further to add.
Thank you. Councillor Hoddle, would you like to respond?
Just very briefly, yes, very happy to look at proposals on best practice, obviously being brought forward within the appropriate regulatory context, but very happy to have a conversation about that and see what we can do. I, you know, quite agree on the point about delivery. And, you know, I look forward to seeing cross-party support for some of the major projects and, you know, having our ambitious programme for Norwich, which sometimes feels sadly lacking, and of course, to check that perhaps this helps a new tool.
Now, I move to the vote. All those in favour, please indicate. That's going to be unanimous. So thank you. So now we want to merge it for councillor Giles. So item fifteen, review of the Norfolk Strategic Planning Framework. So I call on councillor Giles to move item fifteen, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This report brings the revised Norfolk Strategic Planning Framework for council approval. The Norfolk Strategic Planning Member Forum and the Greater Norwich Development Partnership have approved the NSPF, subject to ratification from individual local authorities. The NSPF went to Sustainable Development Panel in July and Cabinet in September, both of which recommended approval. The framework is a requirement to meet our duty to cooperate as planning authorities. When assessing the soundness of a local plan, the planning inspector's first step is to assess whether the relevant authorities slash authorities are complying with their duty to cooperate. A number of local authorities have failed to spend nationally in recent months. The NSPF is managed by a jointly funded project manager based at City Council. All Norfolk authorities contribute £10,000 per annum towards the NSPF salary costs and evidence service. The primary provisions to the NSPF are as follows. A review of the vision and objectives and a review of the agreements, which includes the removal on agreements conflicted or no longer relevant. A full review of all sections to ensure all information is correct and up to date. A full review of the economic information in light of Norfolk County Council's economic strategy, which replaced the previous LEP strategies. Updates to the infrastructure section to take account of new information, including new angling waters, new water resources management plan, the Water Resources East Regional Plan, new flood risk data, the new Norfolk Strategic Infrastructure Delivery Plan, the updated Jean Round's Action Plan, that's going infrastructure and recreational avoidance mitigation strategy, and biodiversity net gain and local nature recovery strategy. A new section has been created to cover nutrient neutrality, and there is a reflection of the new standard methodology for calculating housing need. The new standard methodology for calculating housing need means there is a forty eight percent increase in our housing target for Norfolk and thirty four percent for Greater Norwich. Appendix one to the Cabinet report sets out in summary how the changes to the NSPF will impact Norwich. Pages two to seven of the NSPF itself summarizes the agreements. I would draw colleagues' attention to the proposed spatial vision for Norfolk as set out under Agreement Two on pages twelve to thirteen of the NSPF. And the vision reads as follows. By the middle of the twenty first century, Norfolk would be increasingly recognised nationally, having a strong and vibrant economy providing high-quality economic opportunities for residents in urban and rural areas. Its settlements and key infrastructure will be physically resilient to the impacts of climate change. The natural, built-in historic environments will be enhanced through the regeneration of settlements, safeguarding and enhancement of current assets and networks, improving both biodiversity and the quality of life and health for residents. Housing needs will be met in full in socially inclusive communities. The county will be better connected by having good transport links to major cities in the UK and Europe. Excellent and excellent digital connectivity. A good relationship between homes and jobs will help minimise the need to travel, and residents will have a choice about how they meet their demand for local travel. I would also draw colleagues' attention to the summary of the proposed shared objectives as set out under Agreement Three on pages thirteen to fifteen of the NSPF. These come under the following subheadings. Realising the economic potential of Norfolk and its people. Reducing Norfolk's greenhouse gas emissions and improving air quality, as well as reducing the impact from exposure to and effects of climate change. Addressing housing needs. Improving quality of life and health. And improving and conserving Norfolk's rich and biodiverse environment. The NSPF is a massive document, and I would like to finish by thanking Trevor Wigger in particular for all his hard work on producing the revised NSPF. To summarize, I propose full council approves the revised Norfolk Strategic Planning Framework. Thank you.
I want councillor Harper to second the item, please.
I'm seconded for my reserved right to speak.
Thank you. And now, of course, we expect this, it's councillor Steve, please, on the green seats.
Thank you, Deputy Lord Mayor. And thank you to councillor Giles. As councillors will know, this framework is already being considered by the Sustainable Development Panel, where we have the opportunity to ask questions in detailed detail. For the most part, it is a sensible tactic of aligning the planning policy across Norfolk and creating a group plan that we can propose, and even to carry a detail because that's being done. But one point of common frustration did emerge, and that's water saving. We all recognise a lot of challenges in this county, and yet government guidelines for many councils, setting stronger and lighter justified policies on which we previously in new developments, that constraint feels out of step with the reality we face in Norfolk. And I think you had a council in well-plotted freedom to go through. With that coming out of it, I would like to thank officers, councillor Giles, for their detailed work on this favour. And on behalf of the group, I'm happy to support regulations. Thank you.
Councillor Hoddle, please.
Thank you, Deputy Lord Mayor. Happy to endorse the two hundred and twenty five review of the Norfolk Strategic Planning Framework, now in its fourth version. I'd like to thank Mike Burrow, Mike Burrow, for his work on this document, and over recent years making the core document and illustrating the Norfolk authorities' duty to cooperate, meeting an essential requirement for a successful examination in the adoption of the local plan in March twenty twenty four. When you're a member of a small opposition party on this council, it does mean you attend round more meetings than the average member. So I'm very used to attending the Sustainable Panel and hearing firsthand Mike's clear and detailed explanations of these important documents and the changes they contain. I'd future planning work across a wide range of set topics, from economic sector, transport, digital connectivity and green infrastructure, and most importantly, new housing targets. Happy to endorse this report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Davies.
Thank you. This review of the NSPF shows the Royal Valley working together across council boundaries. How does a judge transport people and don't hit the interstate lines? And the framework has covered the share of evidence, but I'll draw this down to bill on that. Looking ahead, there's also a question, what happens when council boundaries change and are moved to new authority authorities? How will the SNSPF, Strategic Planning Framework, adapt new structures? And how do we make sure we don't lose momentum on housing infrastructure and climate action during a new transition? So I welcome this review and the progress it shows, but I do want us to keep an eye on the future. If we strengthen the accountability, focus on delivery and climate change, the framework can go from a useful tool to a truly powerful driver of sustainable growth and social work.
Thank you. And do any other councillors wish to speak on this item? Councillor Hoddle, you have the right to speak. Do you wish to do so?
I don't. Thank you.
Thank you. In which case, councillor Giles, would you like to respond, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In response to councillor Davies' question, the proposal is that duty to cooperate came in in twenty eleven, when regional local government was abolished. And the proposal is that the Strategic Planning Frameworks on a county basis will be replaced with spatial development strategies covering the entire Merriam area. And I think the work done on this strategy would be of great use in the time before that spatial development strategy has been produced, and also provide an enormous amount of evidence, hopefully, to the mayor and their offices in producing the strategy which will ultimately supersede this in the years to come. I would concur with Jesus' thanks to Mike Burrow for line-matching Trevor Wigger in production of this strategy, and I concur with councillor Steve's comments about frustrations of water efficiency standards, and propose move to the vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And now you can vote. All those in favour, please indicate. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Please wait for the councillors' laws to leave the chamber before we start the direct student accommodation SPD. So I call on councillor Giles to move on to the sixth.
It's been unusual, Adam, sure. This report brings Norwich-specific, thank you, Lord Mayor, this report brings a Norwich-specific purpose-built student accommodation supplementary planning document to full council for approval. Since we published a PBSA, a purpose-built student accommodation advice note in twenty nineteen, a significant amount of PBSA has been built in Norwich, and the Greater Norwich Local Plan, GNLP, was endorsed last year. GNLP, positive five of the yard in province, contains support for PBSA away from the UEA campus, where the need for development is justified by the current proposed size of Norwich's higher education institutions, subject to a number of specific criteria being met. As such, the twenty nineteen PBSA guidance note is now outdated, and this SPD updates the evidence base in the guidance for developers, educational institutions, and us as the local planning authority. The SPD takes account of the most recent evidence study published in November twenty twenty four. The key finding from this evidence study is that the current stock and expected pipeline is more than sufficient, more than sufficient, to comfortably meet the food demand of students for twenty thirty eight, thirty nine, including ensuring an element of choice within the market. While there is an argument that increasing PBSA delivery further may reduce pressure on the private rental sector in the wider community, analysis of affordability and factors influencing students' decision-making about accommodation suggests this outcome is not considered realistic. Given the risk of an oversaturated market and possible repercussions for occupancy levels, provider finances and student quality of life, it is concluded that there is no need for further PBSA beyond the current pipeline. Notwithstanding this, given the possibility for demand to change over time, the SPD provides that applicants must commit an assessment of need as part of future planning application. Applicants must meaningfully engage with Norwich's higher education institutions, i.e. universities, which ideally result in their support, nomination agreement or partnership. And universities will be consulted to all such applications that could be approached. Section five of the SPD sets out factors that the city council will consider in assessing PBSA planning application where the need is demonstrated by the applicant. These include location, scale, external building design, external amenity and landscape design, internal building design, cycle storage management, provision of a mix of accommodation and sustainability and energy consumption. In addition to this, developments will still need to satisfy the criteria set out in DM thirteen of Norwich City Council's Development Management Policies regarding communal development and multiple accommodation. The draft SPD went through a five-week public consultation. Some changes have been made as set out in the report. Some changes have been made as set out in the report in response to comments from statutory consultants aging on behalf of developers and universities. Overall, eighty percent of respondents strongly agreed or agreed the existing and pipelines apply that PBSA in Norwich is sufficient to meet demand. I will conclude by thanking both Joy Brown and her manager, Mike Burrow, having forgotten him last time, for their brilliant hard work on the SBD and propose we approve the SBD for adoption. Thank you.
Thank you. One councillor, Gerald, to second the item. Always thank you. Thank you. So now the vote groups next to this councillor Steve.
Thank you Deputy Lord Mayor and councillor Giles. This SBD is a review before the Sustainable Development Panel. We will raise questions in great detail. From the Green Group's perspective, a key issue is not whether the school should be governed by us, coordination and language should be genuinely affordable, but the scale and concentration have clearly been estated in Norwich, especially since December. Where we've seen a steady, steady, steady move at some locations for such things over the last decade. We've seen a number of provisions this time developing, we see this often in locations where the solutions seem to be balanced and there's nothing to be required that has been needed. This is why Green's have consistently supported a more tailored and nuanced approach, one that makes sure new students are genuinely justified, located appropriately and not so driven by a special set of development. I welcome the dear of everyone, this SBD advice. And I want to thank officers for their work together on behalf of my group. I intend to support recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Murray.
Thank you Deputy Lord Mayor. Again, thanks to officers Mike Brown and Joy Brown for the production of this document. We all know that Norwich has two excellent universities and a further education college. So that means over twenty thousand students, all of whom need a range of good quality accommodation. So in recent years, Norwich City Centre has seen a significant amount of purpose-built student accommodation, ignoring the pipeline. So evidence was sought to inform further applications and the outcome is simply put in parallel, evidence suggests there is no further need for purpose-built student accommodation as the needs of the existing student population and projected future populations can be met by existing and pipeline supply. However, as we know, situations can change and they have changed in recent years when the government decided to, previous government to exclude a lot of overseas students and that did cause a number of problems, especially for university standard when the accommodation that they had was not taken up. And again, it had a knock-on effect on their income. So it is slightly important we do not have any, not too much surplus of student accommodation. So with that in mind, there is always the opportunity for applicants to submit an assessment of need to help decide an application should circumstances change. And we do need to keep a good variety of accommodation, both purpose-built and privately rented accommodation. And this document helps achieve that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Lewis.
Thank you. Yes, I welcome this SBD. It's reassuring we do have plenty of student accommodation and who don't know what the main, but it's reassuring that if need PBSA can be demonstrated, there is the option for it to go ahead and have a green London or whatever. And this, I just think this will better design, stronger environmental standards and developments that work for our community should they be needed in the future. So I'll be supportive of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any other councillors wish to speak on this item? Please, Gerald.
I mean, it's really, whilst we've got this job, it's also bringing student accommodation from the centre as some of you represent with a high number of students living in HMOs and houses converted is a pretty hot topic in my ward. And I think it's important that residents know we are keeping this under consideration because there is an impact, yes, impacts on the city centre, but also impacts on communities beyond that and having that balance of accommodation. I think in English, in purpose-built accommodation, that's how this benefits for communities and places to live in universities as well. So I think coming back, different options and I think we need to make sure we do keep this under review going forward.
Thank you. Any other members wish to speak on this? Councillor Giles, would you like to respond to this?
Thank you Lord Mayor. Thank you to councillors for their comments. I think what was most striking from this evidence study was just how unaffordable and much student accommodation has become for students and the gap between what they get in finance and what they have to pay out in rent is really quite striking. In that context, we do welcome as a group the announcement that maintenance grants were brought back, means tested maintenance grants. I had a means tested maintenance grant in my first couple of years at uni before they were abolished and that's a very welcome announcement. Thank you. And I'm proposing.
Councillor Hart, this too referred. All those in place, please indicate. Now that's carried, could someone get the back in your place? Right, now we are very close to the two hour mark. So it seems at appropriate point to test where councillors act in terms of which items members wish to take as unposed and which are proposed. So we'll go through them one at a time and see whether they can be taken as unposed. So item seventeen, G N P policy two, does anyone wish to oppose that? Okay, that is taken as unposed. Item eighteen, Greater Norwich Green Infrastructure Strategy Supplementary Planning Document Draft. Does anyone wish to oppose that? No, that's taken as unposed business. Thank you. So we now move on to motions. Motion nineteen A, we have some amendments to that which are not accepted. So that by default becomes opposed business. Motion nineteen B, councillor Hart, I think there's an amendment from councillor Schmier, I'm not sure if you've had an opportunity to see it yet. So I'm potentially on the spot and actually be prepared to accept that.
I think there was one, one line we potentially wanted to discuss.
Okay, so that becomes an opposed business later. Thank you. So nineteen C, we've got an amendment, some amendments that have been proposed. I think councillor Galvin, you're accepting. So that item we're taking as unposed. Unless anyone wishes to oppose that. No, I think we'd like to debate that, please. Debate nineteen C. Okay, thank you. So nineteen D has some amendments that are not accepted. So that comes opposed by default. And nineteen E, zero tolerance is used ahead. So they are opposed to that item. So that is taken as unposed. So we've got four motions left to debate. We will have a ten minute break. So we will start again at twenty one forty three. Thank you.
On to motions. Motion 19A, 'Getting Tough on flytting'. Council Cat has amended her own motion, which has been circulated. This is called a substantive motion at this session. So I invite Council Cat to move her motion as amended.
Thank you, Deputy Lord Mayor. Our time here is relatively short. The reason for bringing this motion is because basically every single year since I've joined this council in 2022, fightin' in records have continued to get worse and worse. This has been shared by residents, it's quite evident on our streets. And people have issued numbers of reports, have now hit over 7,000. And when the data came out, that was about a month, not a whole year. Fightin' in makes our city a mess. It's a target of stays and targets for both flytters and fights residential streets and green spaces. And this environmental crime needs to be taken seriously. The Labour administration, so it does take it seriously, but all the evidence at the moment shows that that isn't really the case, especially if you compare it to other local authorities across the country. If you look at the last government report on enforcement records from across the country, our City Council came last of all councils in the country, many ports. And I think if you spoke to residents, they'd say the same thing. The reason why I'm proposing a zero tolerance approach is because of the lack of significant action on this. And it's created a culture where a lot of people know that frankly nothing will happen if they dump unwanted rubbish on the street, next to communal bins or in a state or in a park. Currently, the council has no official enforcement policy for fightin' at all. That's why we have to go back to a more corporate enforcement policy. While we don't have a specific enforcement policy for fightin' itself, there's no way that you can say that we're taking it seriously. The council's given very clear recommendations to deal with this problem from scrutiny in 2022. But it has been three years since this, and a lot of those recommendations have not actually materialised. And it's time that the administration takes action and looks for those things. The motion is a measured strategy that will allow the council to introduce a strong approach to get tough on flytters and deal with this problem once and for all. Engage with communities directly, provide monthly good cons and education, and get us to a place where we can reinvest money from fightin' fines to improve our streets and type of our city.
Thank you. I call on Council Schmier to second your motion.
Thank you very much, Deputy Lord Mayor. Fightin' in is an eyesore. It's illegal, it's antisocial, and it's costing discounts of hundreds or thousands of pounds a year. Money that could and should be going to support vital local services. But more than that, it's a source of deep frustration for residents across Norwich. And in my time as the councillor over the last decade, the issue seems to be getting worse, as figures Alex quoted there seem to testify to. So whether it's mattresses being dumped in alleyways, broken furniture, left at communal bins, or entire van loads of waste picked up at the edges of our parks, it damages community pride and contributes to a sense that no one cares. That's why it's time to move on to a break. One that recognises the problem in all its complexities, but gets tougher on those who are willfully making it worse. And I think at this point I need to stress that there seem to be two, three types of offenders that we need to address. Firstly, there are those who simply don't realise what can and can't be left at communal bins. And this is a failure of community cohesion. We must improve sign and truthfulness in digital outreach, especially in high density areas. Second, there are residents who simply can't afford bulky waste collections. For then, we need to look again at how we can offer subsidised re-collections for low income households so that poverty is not criminalised and people aren't forced into illegal disposal through desperation. The third group, the third group are the raw vendors. They are the raw operators who take money to so dispose of waste and then dump it while someone goes and stores it, typically in the communal bins of our council housing estates. These are not confused or cash-struck residents. They are criminals making a profit from environmental damage. And their actions, like in entire neighbourhoods, reduce the quality of life of everyone and cost this council a small fortune. And for too long, they have acted without power of community. So we must do more to fight and find these offenders. We need more enforcement officers, better use of surveillance in hotspots areas, and stronger collaboration with the police and environmental agents. Norwich residents deserve clean streets. Let's be fair to those doing their best, but firm on those who are flashing our city for profit. This motion, canisters, seeks to achieve just that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. One amendment has been submitted from Council Hampton. This has been tabled. Council Cat, do you accept the proposed amendment from Council Hampton as tabled?
Do you mean the amendments that were circulated?
So just so I can be clear, I need you probably to say it, but you're indicating you accepted the amendments to Resolutions B, D, E, F and I.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. But not the others. So I call on Council Hampton to move your amendment, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I wasn't aware of which ones were accepted or not clearly. So apologies if I did make it clear, but I'm just going to speak to the law and try and wrap through these because there's quite a lot to cover. So on point A, we do review our flytting approach on an ongoing basis, which is factual. And we want to be clear that as much as we would mainly like to, we can't investigate every single flight of incident if there isn't any evidence or leads, but resource implications are physically huge, so we amend it to that effect. On point B, a need for our approach to cover enforcement engagement and education where appropriate. That was the intention behind this, I really welcome some of the comments that Schmier made about the kind of slight difference in behind some flytting cases. We just took this in to make it clear that those purposeful, organised persistent flytters need to receive the strongest penalties. And it does reference our forthcoming environmental enforcement policy, which I already have to hand back, I've said it here before, is in the works. On point C, we've amended to make clear we do not tolerate flytting. Just because we don't have the resources, the powers, the omnipresence to be able to do with every single incident doesn't mean that we tolerate them happening. And as I say, we'd insert it B just to give a little bit of nuance around that there are occasions where actual engagement will be best in the first instance. On D, we are happy to investigate enforcement options. And I know officers have already done research into those mentioned here, and other approaches local authorities have tried to pursue. So maybe I'll just be opportunity to intercontinue these there, but that's fine principle. On point E, we've amended this because if we're going to set a target, it needs to be evidence based, not arbitrary like this seems to be. Unless Council Cat have given me a very formal methodology, how have you landed on this? We'd rather do the work to go away benchmark and do something that's ambitious but meaningful, really. On point F, for starters, we've changed this to re-waste amnesties, not flytting amnesties, as quite simply there's no way to guarantee that items deposited at these events were all have been flytted otherwise. Many lessons will completely understand the disposal right and they would have disposed of responsibility because of the level of convenience. Similarly, we're clear that these need to be targeted, doing it on a widespread basis. Because of the wider use of these, it is not a sustainable long term solution and it's certainly not cost effective, as well as that we'll be continuing these on a trial basis. I mentioned earlier, actually, the public question response of the council has facilitated collections and a couple of amendments organised by brilliant community groups and volunteers. And this is work we will therefore continue to make sure we get approaches that work best for different communities. We've also made explicit that these need to be staffed, a necessity to limit contamination, encourage legitimate use of this provision and for health and safety purposes. Got no real issues with G. Let me see. Sorry, just lost my track a bit. In fact, yeah, G.
So yeah, Council Hampton, you get three units to move.
Oh, okay, I'm line up there.
Yeah. Well, can I have a second opinion then? Maybe they can carry on. Council start then.
I'm going to continue to speak, but... No, I just, yeah, so I was going to say, the motion is not correct in a number of factual matters and we really, really feel that we need to correct that because there is constant misinformation about that approach to fightin' which is circulating. And as Dean said, we have resource constraints. So if we're going to investigate, we need evidence. We need evidence that it is flytting and it's worth promoting resource to it. And the suggestion that we tolerate flytting, we don't tolerate flytting. Of course we don't. But again, it's a resource issue. And the fact that we don't investigate this all instances, in particular where there is evidence, that's not evidence of tolerating flytting. And that's evidence of having a targeted approach to it and using our resources as wisely as possible. And I think the 10% target that's been mentioned, I wouldn't pick that up as well because no matter where that's come from, as Emira said, it does seem to be arbitrary. And again, talking about evidence, we need it to be evidence based if we're going to adopt this. So I think there's a lot, there are elements of this motion which we can't agree to for that reason. Even though there are elements that we can agree to, and we are happy with some of it. So that's why we propose the amendments and what will be voted through amendment.
Thank you. Do any other councillors wish to speak? I'm Council Hampton, as amended it. Council Maguire.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I think it's absolutely central that we adopt Council Hampton's amendments because as it stands, the tone, I'm afraid, is far from desirable. And I'm so brave that Council Schmier has softened the tone in what he had to say. But just look at the words, it starts off with 'getting tough', and worst of all, this decimation, or even worse, idea. It just shows a total lack of any kind of understanding or compassion of humanity. I'm just surprised if we have a big problems out of the authorities. Okay, there are needs to be tough. We do agree that flytting is unpleasant. We do agree it's unsightly. We do agree it shouldn't happen. But Lord Mayor, you do not change behaviour with strong acts that go over the people involved. Even police will tell you, you can't enforce your way out of a social problem. For that, what it is, Deputy Lord Mayor, we need to start with an emphasis on the understanding. Understanding what individuals are doing and why. We need to recognise and address the cultural forces at work. We need to understand the values more clearly. And I accept that some of this is considered in the motion, but it has no priority. It's something that it's matches stancing about what we're going to do, who we're going to hit. We shouldn't be coming down the hill in fire and brimstone. Lord, Deputy Lord Mayor, a former Green councillor and a fellow psychologist would have usedly advised you if she had been here on this occasion, I miss Council Maguire. Once the red screen party was a Green party, it had a mission. Now it just seems to be a rat-bagging populist, tough-thumping rhetoric. I know it accepted the Green Party with lots of place for anti-making sentiments for the city. And much of the Greens' support came from the Tories, particularly strategically. But of course, many of those Tories have a new home and a reform party. Is that why the Greens are going out for macho? When these top you know, we told them what they're going to do. Is that people who might offend them? Are they chasing votes at any price? Lord Mayor, I've said you are not. I will be voting for this proposed amendment. And if it goes through the new substantial motion, I shall be voting for it. Thank you, Deputy. Thank you, Deputy Lord Mayor.
Councillor Campbell.
Thank you. I just like to speak on behalf of residents who have contacted me over the years now. I just want to reassure everyone that I've been contacted multiple, multiple times by people, both Wednesday morning and Thursday morning, by people like at Wiltshire and in the New York areas with constant flight tipping. So I really do think that in all my time, very sadly, it's quite a lot of work, haven't seen any improvement with that. We have, you know, always sought to work positively on this, put in hours and hours of time on it. And this is an effort to resolve, close the gap on that and try and, it's not an impossible task. It doesn't have to be like that. And I think everyone knows, plenty of work has been done actually in psychology. When there is waste left in places, people will tend to leave other ways to space them. So I think, you know, as a councillor, we can do better than this. And I don't think this is too extreme. I think it just, it marks a point at which we need to say, no, we need to listen to those citizens and we make sure action works.
Thank you. Any other councillors wish to speak on the amendment? Councillor Shmira.
Yeah, thank you very much. As we've heard, flight tipping is not a new problem in Norwich. It has been growing year on year and residents are fed up, fed up of seeing the same sofas dumped in the same alleyways, the same fridges left in the same communal bins. And unfortunately, listening to what has been said, I'm fed up of the same excuses from this Labour council. This council's softly, softly approach to this problem is not working. And that's why I'm surprised, I'm a little disappointed that these amendments have been produced that watered down a lot of the substance of this motion, removed wasteland introduction, new ideas and removed meaningful targets. And those targets, they're not arbitrary, as councillor Stone suggested. It's only they are ambitious and ambitious what this council should and would be if we, in the Green Party, were in charge. And this situation does require urgent action, which unfortunately, these amendments seem to replace them less urgently. And the reason I'm voting against this amendment is simple. It's because if you walk down the streets of Russell Street, indeed anywhere across the city centre or across Manchester City, you will see a very stark reality. And that is around those communal bins where we're basically piled up and people are reporting is again and again, nothing is used to change. That's why we brought this motion here. It's fundamentally to make a clear change in policy. And unfortunately, I fear that this amendment doesn't achieve what we were hoping it would do. That's it. I do appreciate, of course, the efforts that councillors obviously have brought in coming up with these amendments. But I'm afraid for the reasons I've outlined, I will be voting against them. But thank you very much nonetheless.
Councillor Stone.
Thank you, Chair. So I would vote against the amendments as well. I think that slice of proportion action is not saying some huge action always. There are, I think, three different possible approaches about one as a response to flight tipping. I think amendments, as you walk around your boards, you might need some unfortunate as I am, just that we still have plenty of notices up that look like they are inviting flight tipping. There's like lovely blue signs with the white mattress on them that look like they're telling people to bring out their luggage and leave it there. The number of times they've been on board abouts over the years and pointed that out, and that hasn't yet changed. So that's almost about telling people, giving people the right message and encouraging them to do the right thing. If we can't even get that right, if we can't get our sign right, obviously people are not going to, you know, do what we're expecting them to do and to do in the opposite. So yes, I think we need to shake up on this. It's some of those blue, it was back in 2022, we had the scrutiny task committee. I remember well going to the scrutiny meeting as a cabinet member at the time and it felt positive, like there were things that we could really achieve. And so it's really unfortunate that the same questions are having to be asked in three years later. Three years, this is. So, yeah, I won't be supporting the amendments, but I'll be supporting the motion. Thank you.
You're the right one. Councillor Speaker.
Thank you, Deputy Lord Mayor. I won't be supporting the amendments either. And from my own experience, being a councillor in Tammy West, being out on the highest levels of flight tipping there in South Square, so I'm familiar with that. And then I moved to Mancroft and realised that it really is in the city. And so we do need to actually, the council, all these amendments, can really stand as a time. This is an opportunity for us to actually take a proper meaningful action on this amendment issue. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak on this, councillor Sanders?
Thank you, Deputy Lord Mayor. I think the amendments are really, really worthwhile, they are considered and balanced. The language of the initial motion really is not very helpful to talk about zero tolerance. You talk about zero tolerance and straight away you're setting us on failure. We all know that when flight tipping appears, it's someone in the neighbourhood who's probably not travelled more than about 1,500 metres from their home. But most of the people within the neighbourhood who are doing the flight tipping. And but there's a sense of zero tolerance is setting up failure because you need to be able to know who is doing the flight tipping, if you're going to carry on with prosecutions or enforcement or whatever. It reminds me of the Reagan factory days when they had their own joint, which was zero tolerance and was equally due to failure. And this obviously is on the same sort of scale. But I really think people need to consider what these amendments have designed to do and let's to give a considerable approach and work towards educating and informing our community in what they do with their disposal, or shall we say, items. Thank you, Deputy Lord Mayor.
Councillor Davis, please.
Thank you. Do you look back at this country, Brian O'Neill has a 100% conviction rate, but it doesn't mean we don't have zero tolerance towards it.
Councillor Harper.
Thank you, Deputy Lord Mayor. I think, you know, for me, I find this a bit frustrating because I think, as I've put in, as you said, you know, it feels quite performative, you know, bringing a motion with such a hostile tag, when actually it could be something we could, you know, probably agree on, you know, for a large part. And, you know, I've recently done some case work for someone in Manford who raised the Haslip case bin store. And he had to reach out to me and my resident that he knows because, you know, he had no luck contacting his councillors and they hadn't responded to any of his messages. So as we always do, you know, I stepped in to make sure that it was sorted out and had a very thorough response from offices at this day, which I was able to circulate back to the resident. So, you know, perhaps, just perhaps, the focus should be on getting, you know, some of this stuff fixed rather than bringing, raising these issues in such a performative way to try and score, to try and score points. Perhaps doing a little bit more case work might be worthwhile. And it's also, you know, just worth pointing out that, you know, in the desperation to always criticise the Labour administration, there's absolutely no reference to the fact that the Conservative County Council are making it harder and harder and harder and harder for people to dispose of their refuse properly. It's hardly surprising, given that access to the refuse recycling centre has been reduced by around 20%. And it's hardly surprising that flight tipping, you know, kind of is on the increase. Of course, it's not the only issue, but I think we're all getting a bit tired of these very subjective points that actually do nothing to move this forward.
Thank you. Councillor Fox.
Well, thank you, councillor Harper, for taking up for the bins and passage to those because I remember councillor Shmira and myself have been reporting those bins ever since I was elected. And I know that councillor Osborne had frequently reported those bins and the flight tipping that happened there frequently before that. So it's good that the Labour Cabinet have finally taken those bins seriously. So I appreciate your support with that. And councillor Maguire, I know that you were talking about the language and the strength of the language and words like tough that you felt inappropriate. But when you're like living with flight tipping outside a door frequently, that is what is tough. And I don't know why the Cabinet are afraid of taking tough measures on this while you're afraid of tough language about this. We should be taking tough measures to resolve this because it creates a misery for our residents. And it's been creating misery in councils close for years, not just in like councillor Harper's time. So, yeah, I will not be voting for these amendments because I do think we should be tough on flight tipping.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak on the amendments? Councillor Cap.
Thank you. I'd like to start just by thanking councillor Hampton because there are some really, really good amendments in here, specifically E and I. And I think that really supports all that's ten and agree on. Unfortunately, I feel like the tone of this debate has actually been lowered by members of the Labour group commenting on the next end. I think they probably wanted to strengthen the actual issue. And partly the problem is that these councillors have admitted that there is a problem. Why would I bring this motion if I didn't think it was a problem? Councillor Harper said that this was a performative motion, that the parts of this motion would do nothing to move this forward. And that's really disingenuous. And this council has no enforcement policy of flight tipping, specific enforcement policy of flight tipping. I don't see how that would not move this forward. And as councillor Oliver said, we had a really, really good recommendation to come out of the scrutiny meeting in 2022. That was three years ago. If we continue to accept amendments that, you know, pretend to say there isn't actually a problem and the council can continue doing the same things that it has been doing, nothing is actually going to change. And that's why I'm not accepting a lot of these amendments today. In terms of the target, this isn't the first time this motion has been brought. Hopefully, you know, if they thought that they needed some time to think about what an appropriate target would be, there's a chance for that to be agreed so that it could go before full council and we could get a public commitment on it. I would like to ask for the reasoning and evidence for the trialling of waste amnesties going forward. And we can all agree that that is a positive idea and it would be good to see the rationale for that. But to summarise, we now have over 7,000 reports of flight tipping in the last year. The last government report that has lasted in terms of enforcement, lots of councils are much higher than that. So I don't think we should be pretending that this is impossible to deal with. There's some very measured parts of this motion. And I hope that people will support it, even if we are disagreeing about some of the amendments now. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak on the amendment? In which case, can I call on councillor Hampton to respond, please.
Thank you. And thank you everyone for the comments. I'll just pick up a few things that were mentioned and respond. So I forgot to jot it down. Councillor Oliver, signage. I think you'll find it, our amendment that introduced signage into this motion, it was something that came out of the course of scrutiny work. I think it is an important thing to get by the law and welcome to send those cases to me or I can follow that up with officers. They have been being replaced across the city for reasons you mentioned, but we recognise that that is an important way of dealing with flight tipping. That's why we put it in and that's why we tried to just kind of shoehorn in some of the more things that came out of that really good scrutiny work. And just to make clear, that scrutiny work made convincing 2022, I think, but it didn't come up with those recommendations until March last year. We responded to them at Cabinet in June, I think, after the elections or thereabouts. So actually, that bit of work, it was incredibly thorough. It's not been that long ago since we responded to those recommendations. We have made progress against a lot of those recommendations and we're always more and happier to return to scrutiny committee to update on that more fully. In terms of the targets, still haven't heard from councillor Cap with the Greens about where that 10% figure did come from. As I say, we don't intend on just picking a figure. We would want to go away and do some serious work, benchmarking, looking at best practice. The key, you keep coming back to the last government report, where it put us last. It is not true. There are a number of councils who took no action from start to end. And what you don't mention is that in 2022, the government is continuing to report the data in that way, recognising its limitations, given the vast variety and kind of types of flight tipping you get across the country. It's not comparing apples to pears, we've been really clear about that. And you will know because I have continued to report with that relief table system, FPNs and other enforcement measures issued. I don't have numbers in front of me, but there is a really clear upward trend and that's only set to go upwards now. We have, as I've already mentioned, enforcement policy, final signing of an enforcement officer funded by the UKSPF. So we have improved. I've said this, I've talked about this right before, this change, so councillor Cap knows that for us, we can only conclude. I mean, explained about lead tables before in this forum, so I do presume that, but the fact is being, we've kind of taken out context and used how we're using it yet, which is disappointing. Overall, we put forward these amendments to try and get this in a form that's evidence-based and deliverable. It's really easy to make bold, uncostly commitments, knowing that not one is happening. So I hope as many members as possible can support these today.
Thank you. We're now ready to vote for the amendment. All those in favour of the amendment, please indicate. Fifteen. Ten. Abstentions? Three. So the amendment is carried. So we're now, that becomes a substantive motion, so I'll ask groups by express to suspend. However, before I do that, I will let groups by express and another member to know that we have 13 minutes left of this meeting before a guilty team comes down. No mid-sentence, no votes at the end or anything like that. So if we can't complete the business in 13 minutes, all of the debate on the amendments becomes a waste of time. So let's crack on. Councillor Hampton.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'll try and be quick and not take up points. I've already covered, again, to be clear, flight tipping is a part of our communities and it is tolerated by this council. We have done a lot of work by our Love Nine Programme that brings together a range of actions to tackle flight tipping, clean up our city and gave residents a pride place, which included targeted safety cleans, upgrades of bins and bin stores, sign and education, engagement, love Norwich Hub Online, collecting together advice, supporting litter picks, community events, love Norwich Grants Award to numerous groups to instill that pride and deter legitimate illegitimate uses like flight tipping. Have the enforcement officer in place following up on these. A really positive upward trend in the enforcement we have been able to take. I'd also highlight that we run highly successful responsive flight collection surveys with 95% of reported incidents being cleared in 24 hours. So we want to tackle flight tipping and environmental crimes in an effective, evidence-based manner, according to best practices and within the resources available, maximising this wherever possible. Uh, the original issue about peace now missed out some really necessary best practices which we've tried to put back in. Uh, I, I think there are issues with the data in places, we've come to a second and have touched on a bit already, um, and it's not realistic at that level of resource that we are required. It does correct the statement, it's been under £80,000 collecting flight tipping, uh, savings there, but at the same time, I may just make the point, we look far more than this, but if I don't get me wrong, there's a, there's a certain amount of benefits to the radiating flight tipping, a worse spend, but I will sort of excuse it for that, uh, we've got our services to run, priorities to balance. Um, again, I'd like to acknowledge the scrutiny committee have done, uh, and more would happen to pick that up at any time. Um, in terms of data, preamble here says for 6,927 non-proposals, uh, May 24, April 25, Alex has now got a figure of over 7,000, not clear exactly where that's coming from. The citation they, uh, give is to an E and E News article based on their own press release, which seems to be from an F O I, and it is indeed simply non-proposals, i.e. not being verified, it includes duplication, multiple reports of a same incident and things which have been reported through the flight tipping hall but aren't fighter, usually that's lifted, but we had an interest in case you have a day with like misplaced, don't invite it being reported that way. So a lot of work needs to be done with the data, you can't use it really to determine trends. Uh, latest verified data that gets published by data for 2022, 23 to 23, 24, does indicate a rise of 90 incidents in that period, which is about 3%, so that's what sort of mindings we're talking about, um, really need to be using sound, go by data in these discussions. Um, I've covered the FPNs, um, issue, uh, and we talk about data in no way to detract from flight tipping as an issue, but as I say, we just need to do all this discussion, all, all discussions we have in an honest, open and evidence-based manner. Um, overall, we will support this motion in its amended form. Um, for starters, it is an ask, a list of asks to cabinet, so we will be able to respond more fully in due course. And we can, that aside, um, some of the bits we still think were a bit flawed, including the, kind of, late bit in the preamble, because at the moment it doesn't bind us to deliver on air and, uh, as I say, I look forward to giving a full response on this in due course. And I'm glad, to an extent, we've been able to have this discussion, uh, some of the points, councillor Cat, you asked for more information about approaching waste agencies, happy to get back to you about that outside the meeting, but, um, as I say, on balance, uh, now that we've got this in a slightly kind of more sound, deliverable form, I'm happy to support it at this point.
Thank you. Councillor Ackroyd, can I just call him after the attendance, please?
Yes, I'm abandoning most of what I've written, um, in the interest of time, and I would simply say, the challenge of flight tipping is immense and cannot be ignored when it impacts our communities in the way it does, and we must be careful not to legalise flight tipping through inaction. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Deavies.
Thank you, all of us for the brief, because we have three minutes left, I think. And yes, we will be supporting this motion, I would rather have been supported the, um, quick motion. We're on where we are.
Thank you. Any other members who wish to speak? I haven't spoken yet on this substantive item. No? In which case councillor Cat, which item do you want?
No speeches for me, I have to move away.
Let's move away. All those in favour, please indicate.
And it's carried. And now, so the, the constitution says that after three hours have passed, the start of the council meeting, you are at a convenient point before, and we're now at a convenient point before, unless an adjointed member to president, uh, votes for the meeting to continue, it will adjourn immediately. So I need to get a sense from members present, who would like to continue the meeting for further items, all those in favour, please indicate that. And who would like to adjourn?
So that is Carrie. Thank you very much, everyone, for your input.